Good evening. I will call the meeting to order at 6:01 PM. I am Fenobia Dallas, the Chair of the City of Saginaw Planning Commission. This is a regular meeting of the Planning Commission. Public comments are permitted during the designated time on the agenda. This allows the public to speak to the Planning Commission about issues of general concern in the community. Once you are recognized, give your name and address to the Secretary for the Record. Speakers shall address their remarks to the Commission as a whole. Remarks shall not be addressed to individual Commission members, city staff, or the audience. Speakers may ask general or specific questions, and those questions will be referred to city staff for appropriate follow-up. Each speaker is limited to three minutes and may only speak once. Speakers should limit their remarks to business within the jurisdiction of the Commission. The public hearing is to address the Commission with regard to the subject of the relevant hearing and not to speak on other topics. When the petition, special land use, or site plan approval request in which you are interested is called, please be prepared to speak. Once you are recognized, give your name and address to the staff member for the Record. The applicant whose application is the subject of the public hearing or their designated representative shall be the main presenter and will be allowed 10 minutes for their presentation. After the appellant's presentation, others may comment. Again, those speakers shall address their remarks to the Commission as a whole and not to individual Commission members, city staff, or the audience. Each additional speaker commenting on the subject of the hearing will be limited to three minutes. Speakers again may only speak once on that hearing. This meeting is videotaped, so it is important that only one person speak at a time and the audience observe respect for the speaker. An affirmative vote of the majority of the members present is necessary to grant a petition, special land use, or site plan approval. Recommendations on all petitions, special land uses, or site plans made by the Planning Commission are then forwarded to City Council for disposition. Are there any questions? Seeing none, Staff Zimmerman, will you call the roll call, please?
Commissioner Brayley, Commissioner Zawerko.
Here.
Commissioner Dallas.
Present.
Commissioner Hanley.
Here.
Commissioner Jones, Commissioner Moore.
Present.
Commissioner Nash.
Present.
Commissioner Nightingale, Commissioner Ossash.
Present.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. The first item on our agenda is the approval of minutes from November 23, 2021. Don't have a motion?
So moved, Moore.
Support Nash.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from November 23, 2021. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Extentions? The minutes from November 23, 2021 are approved. The next item on our agenda is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Support Moore.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Thank you. We will, we have approved our agenda for this evening. The next item on our agenda is the public comment section. This is the time for public comments, again, which allows the public to speak to the Planning Commission about issues of general concern in the community. This is not the public hearing component of this meeting. Once you are recognized, give your name and address to the Secretary for the Record. Speakers shall address their remarks to the Commission as a whole. Remarks shall not be addressed to individual Commission members, city staff, or the audience. Speakers may ask general or specific questions, and those questions will be referred to city staff for appropriate follow-up. Each speaker is limited to three minutes and may only speak once. Speakers should limit their remarks to business within the jurisdiction of the Commission. Is there anyone who would like to make a public comment on issues of general concern in the community? Is there anyone who would like to make a general comment about issues in the community? Is there anyone who would like to make a public comment about issues of general concern in the community? Hearing none, we will move forward. The next item on our agenda is new business. Case J-21-01-04, the 2348 and 2350 South Michigan Site Plan Approval for an Expansion of the Originally Approved Marijuana Grower Operation at 2348 South Michigan to Include the Adjacent Housing at 2350 South Michigan. Is the applicant or representative present?
Chair Fenobia may say something quickly.
Yes.
The report indicates the grow operation is actually a retail operation, so that's, that should be corrected.
Thank you. Please state your name and address, and you have 10 minutes for your presentation.
Okay, good evening, everybody. John Maury with D&amp;M Site Surveying and Engineering. Have an easy one here for you. We have an extension of the previous approved site plan. This site location's at 2350 South Michigan Avenue. It's an existing 1,600-square-foot building adjacent to our existing facility at 2348. So the applicant has purchased the old bar, the old Roggs Bar here on South Michigan, and the plan is to knock a hole in the wall and combine these two buildings into one building. The property is currently Zoned B1, and it is consistent with the adjacent zonings. The, the actual site plan here is basically just redoing the parking lot on the southerly side of the bar. There is an existing parking lot there, and to meet the, the city of Saginaw's stormwater requirements, we're going to have to tear that up and redo it. The parking requirement, one space for every 250 square feet. Seven parking spots are required for this square footage. We have eight. The site utilities, there's an existing sanitary sewer hookup that exists, an existing water service, and so the storm sewer is the only thing that we are going to redo here. We're going to add one catch basin in the center of this parking area. We have 48 lineal feet of 30-inch pipe, which we're going to use for our storage per the detention requirements, and then we're just going to have a restrictor up by the sidewalk with an inch-and-a-quarter restrictor in it. So the designed volume of storage is 395 cubic feet of storage.
And that restrictor then is just right up by the road, so we'll store all that, all the storm water, back it up into the pipe, and store it in this parking lot, and then we'll just walk into the combination sewer out in South Michigan. So that's all that we're doing. Obviously, I'm passing it in, but other than that, it's just an extension of that, a special, a new site plan that they've actually started, they actually have a storm sewer. Does anybody got anything else you have to answer on this?
No, thank you. Is there a motion to approve case J-21? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, you're correct. I thought it was a public hearing for a second, I'm mistaken. So used to that.
Let me check here. Is there a motion to approve case J-21-01-04, the 2348 and 2350 South Michigan Site Plan Approval for an Expansion of the Originally Approved Marijuana Retail Operation at 2348 South Michigan to Include the adjacent building at 2350 South Michigan contingent upon engineering review and approval?
So moved, Moore.
Second, Nash.
It's been moved and seconded to approve case J-21-01-04. Are there any questions from the board?
So, I do, I'm sorry. We're just knocking down a wall. The building is there already.
Correct.
We're just knocking down the wall, and we're adding more parking space, less parking space, what are we doing?
Yeah, there's an existing parking lot at the bar.
Right.
And because of the city ordinance, we have to now update the stormwater requirements, so we are going to have to tear this all up, repave it, and we actually have one more parking spot than the square footage for the lot.
So is that going to do damage to the building?
Well, there's a common wall between the two buildings right now, and so they're just going to put a hole in the middle so that they can get between, and this is all just going to be their, their, their storage area, their...
So it's not connected to the building?
Yeah.
Or it is?
Oh, yeah. The office is a common wall.
Okay, okay, so it'll just be like a storage area in back of the original facility?
Right, they'll knock a hole in it, put a door in there, and so that they can go, go to both buildings.
All right, I was trying to get some more employees, but okay.
Any other questions from the board? It has been moved and seconded to approve the case J-21-01-04. Staff Zimmerman, will you take a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Zawerko.
Yes.
Commissioner Dallas.
Yes.
Commissioner Hanley.
Yes.
Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Commissioner Nash.
Yes.
Commissioner Ossash.
Yes.
Motion was approved.
Thank you. We will now begin the public hearing for case J-21-01-11 to allow a special use permit for marijuana establishment at 1460 Atwater. The purpose of a public hearing is to address the Commission with regard to the subject of this hearing and not other topics. Speakers shall address their remarks to the Commission as a whole and not to individual Commission members, city staff, or the audience. The applicant whose application is the subject of this hearing or their designated representative shall be main presenter and will be allowed 10 minutes for their presentation. Each additional speaker commenting on the subject of this public hearing will be limited to three minutes. When you are recognized, please state your name and address for the Record. Is the applicant or representative for case J-21-0011 present?
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Please state your name and address.
Andy Andre.
You have 10 minutes for your presentation.
Thank you. Andy Andre Avanti Development Group, 330 Enterprise Court, Bloomfield Hills, Michigan, 48302. The, the project that we have in front of you tonight at 1460 Atwater, if, if you had the opportunity to go by it or you're familiar with it, you'll see the building that has the self-serve lumber on it. What we're actually looking at is a portion of the building. Within the building itself, there's some firewalls that are separate, that separate the different spaces. There is a lot split that was completed back, I think in about July earlier this year, that segmented the portions of the building. So what we're talking about is not the actual, the entire building itself, there's a portion of the building, so the address 1460 is, is pertinent to that. And if you look, that we've, we've made it clear, designated on the plans themselves just that portion of the building that we're talking about today. So I want to make sure that, that we were clear on that and we had a good understanding. This, the site itself is a, there's an existing building that's there. The building is in fairly decent condition. There's some improvements that have to occur to the exterior, but the roof itself is in very good shape, and the whole portion of the building, from the building down to Atwater, is completely paved. It's, it's all bituminous surface, and we've talked with the, with planning staff, and we've agreed that we're going to remove that pavement out in front of it. We're going to be able to then put a city walk along that frontage, and then the remainder of that portion in front of our building will be just green space. In order to meet the parking requirements, we needed to do some off-site parking at the corner of Atwater and Emily, so we have a parking lot that we're, that we have designated that will be used, and working again with staff, there's 13 parking spaces that are required, and that's exactly what we've proposed there. And we've also provided a gated entrance at that location so that when not in operation, that gate will be locked and it won't be, it won't be used for any other purpose. The, as you're greatly familiar with, the, we're meeting the, the city stormwater requirements as well, very similar to other projects that you've seen. We'll be collecting the runoff within the parking lot and then doing underground storage and then a restricted release out to Atwater. We have provided the photometric for the lighting, LED lighting. We have the landscaping that we've incorporated. We meet and exceed the, the city standard, and again, what we've, when we, in the package that we submitted, we had a building floor plan and elevations. We've included the security camera systems as part of it, so we've incorporated that as well. We've identified that, I think, on the floor plan and on the elevations, there'll be cameras, both interior and exterior. The portion that we're talking about, the build-out itself, is 6640 square feet, 6,640 square feet, and that'll be, that'll be, it's all open right now, and so we'll just be doing an interior build-out to that. As far as the odor is concerned, we've identified odor mitigation measures that were submitted in a written plan, as well as the project plan that you have in front of you. Activated carbon filters are located throughout the, through the, throughout the space themselves. So again, following, I think you have the, the staff report in front of you, recommendation was for approval. We meet and, and hit on all the categories required for the special land use and site plan approval, so we'd be asking for that this evening, and be able to answer any questions that you have as they come up. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone here who would like to comment on this case? Please come to the microphone. Please state your name and address. You have three minutes.
My name is Lorraine Payne, and I stay at 1335 Alger, right behind the dispenser where he's talking about, I think. Is it the upper end or down towards, uh, Bagley?
Right. But is that you right there? 1335, right?
That's right.
Yeah, so where, oh, yeah.
You way down at the...
Yeah, way down at the other end, close to that, close to that.
Okay, so I would like to know, what is they going to do with the other part of the building if they get that in, because it's raggy already? And I would like to know, what is they going to do with the other end of it? Tear it down, or...
That's, that's not our, that, that is not our concern at this, at this, at this evening for this particular site plan. All we're addressing is the address that was listed on the review, which is 1460 Atwater.
Okay, well, long as this, I, I wouldn't like for my kids to be around that, and I have a lot of them for the fourth, you know, on holiday in the summertime, but whatever, I wouldn't like it at all, so.
Could we say anything about this one?
Not this one. Are there any other com, anyone else who would hear would like to comment on this Is there anyone else who would like to comment on this case? Hearing no further comments? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved, Hanley.
Support Nash.
It has been moved and seconded to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? The public hearing is closed. Commissioners, is there a motion to approve case J-21-01-11 to allow a special use permit for marijuana grower processor establishment at 7, excuse me, at 1460 Atwater contingent upon engineering approval and the applicant successfully securing approval by the city clerk for an adult-use marijuana establishment license?
So moved.
It has been moved and seconded to approve case J-21-00, excuse me, 0111. Staff Zimmerman, will you take a roll call vote, please?
Discussion.
Do you want to hear any questions?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Yes.
It's Ossash, it's...
It has been moved and seconded. Commissioners, do you have any questions?
I did.
You first. You. Come in the pod. This is, this is established, but this is just grow correctly, it's not, this is just grow correctly?
That is, that is correct.
Yeah, so there will not be anything distributed to, to local people out of there, it's grow only, right?
That is correct.
Correct. So you're not, kids in the neighborhood can't just knock on the door and come there and say, "Yeah."
No, that is correct.
Grow and processing.
Grow and processing.
Right.
Correct.
I guess, I don't know if it's now, but I need to know. I'm just like Ms. Page. Please tell me what's going to happen with the rest of that building.
Sure, no, that's, that's actually a good question. I was going to speak to her afterwards, because that's why I brought up right from the beginning, that portion of the building we, we have control over, that we are going to do the improvements on. So we've identified that on the plan, and one of the things maybe I shouldn't even mention is the applicant himself is actually involved in commercial construction, and so he's actually going to be doing that. He specializes in roofing and siding and that type of thing. So he already, from the very beginning, said, "Listen, this thing's got to get re-sided, and we got to make sure that everything's tightened up." So he's already looking at, you know, how do we aesthetically improve that? Now, we are, what we can do, and what we've, what we can only be limited to is that portion that is ours, and, and that's what's identified in the plan, that 1460, that 166 feet or so portion of that building, that's what, that's what we can improve. So while it's not the entire building, it is a significant portion of it, and I think also when, when you start to have improvements like that, it's going to probably spur, you know, some, some further improvements along that building. So the remainder of the building, I, I can tell you right now, I've been in the other space, the, the space that's closer to Emily, and it's utilized for mostly storage right now. There's some, there's a car, I think, in there, there's some things. Again, the building itself is actually in pretty good condition. I, I went into the building thinking, "Oh, my gosh, the roof is going to be this." It was, it, there was no leaks, there was nothing. So the building itself, while it can use a facelift, certainly the, the structure of the building is, is pretty good. So we'll, we'll really focusing on the improvements that we can do on our portion of that building. The remainder of it, I think, is going to be up to whoever owns that portion.
So you're only buying a portion? One more question. How many jobs?
Jobs. I should, you know what, I should have just brought that out. I know, I miss Mary U.S.A. I know, I know it's not part of the application, but we, let's get to that, right?
Yes, I'm going to ask.
So let me, let me, yes, so what we're projecting, what we're projecting is eight employees, okay? That'll be in a couple of different shifts. I, I want to, I, I think that's important, because let me, I, I think what you brought up is, is important, because I was also part of a different application at the time, and what, and what I learned from that, I think, as we continue to learn, is the, the applicant at that time had, had initiative on local hiring, especially within the ZIP code, okay? And so what I've done is with this applicant, I shared that information and how to go about doing it for the immediate area as well. So while, you know, job creation is, we're probably, we're targeting eight employees, I think it's important that, that I bring up, that I shared that information with them on how to target, you know, within the immediate area as well.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And just to expand upon that, too, because we always talk about, you know, what this industry is bringing into city, that's good to hear, because I have visited some of the other facilities, for those people that are watching at home or in the crowd, there can be even 15 people working in a dispensary. I do want to make a comment, what Commissioner Nash had brought up, just so that the public understands, the dispensary or the grow facilities are not dispensaries, so there's, there's not people coming and going, there's not a lot of traffic, so it's just lockdown, growing, going to labs, going through the Michigan system, so. But yeah, so thank you for that information, and it's good to hear. Now, are these full-time positions as well?
No, these would be, these would be full-time positions.
Full-time positions, okay. Benefits and such, okay, great, thanks.
Any other questions from the Commission?
How, how extensive is the remodeling going to be?
Right, that's, that's a good question. So on the interior, the building is actually a pre-engineered building, and so it's all open within, so there's, it's an open span from side to side, so it actually makes it really easy to do interior build-out. So while, you know, the improvements that we're going to be doing on the inside are going to be very easy, straightforward. There is, they're really, you know, going to be building walls. We are, you know, proposing a bathroom. There is no bathroom in there now. We've had, earlier in the month, we had a meeting with both the planning and engineering staff. We worked out a couple of things. We're going to be bringing a new sanitary service into it, a new water service into it, so the interior build-out, I, I think, is very, very straightforward, and the interior, the exterior, like I mentioned, the applicant is, that's what he specializes in, so he'll, he'll definitely be taking care of it to, to make sure the exterior looks good there.
Well, this issue's come up before, I think, probably when you were here about negative air pressure.
Right.
How extensive are you going to have to, interior-wise?
Right. So... Right, so that, again, I, I think what we've learned, you know, as we've talked about this, as, as this has evolved in and into design, we design that within the system, within the mechanical system, so we can design that to, we're doing it in other locations as well, so we're designing that into, into the rooms themselves, so maintaining that negative pressure.
Okay. What's your timeframe?
Honestly, I, I've been told that if things go well tonight, I need to, to, I'll be working through the holidays, let's put it that way.
Any other questions from the Commission? Hearing none. It has been moved and seconded to approve and discussed, to approve case J-21-01-11. Staff Zimmerman, will you now take a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Zawerko.
Yes.
Commissioner Dallas.
Yes.
Commissioner Hanley.
Yes.
Commissioner Moore.
Yes, I go along, yes.
Commissioner Nash.
Yes.
Commissioner Ossash.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the public hearing for case J-21-00, excuse me, 0113 to allow a special use permit for a marijuana establishment at 222 North Bates. Is the applicant or representative for case J-21-0113 present? Please state your name and address for the Record. You have 10 minutes for your presentation.
Hello, my name is Fadi Mansour. I'm the owner of the facility. Sorry. Can you hear me?
No, you can pull the microphone.
All right. Fadi Mansour, I'm the owner of the facility, located at 222 North Bates Street in Saginaw, and we're proposing here for a change of use for marijuana, retail marijuana establishment, dispensary, to be specific.
Go ahead, I'll just speak. So my name's Dave McLean, I'm with AMAG. We are the architectural firm that's working with Fadi, who is the owner, and we also have here tonight Roddy Besleck from Fenton Land Surveying and Engineering as well, to go over some of the discussions that might come about for the engineering of the site plan. What we're going to be doing here, it's, it's, we are in the M1 zoning district. The existing house actually was structurally compromised, so we will be tearing about two-thirds of the home, or the existing building down, reusing the back half and rebuilding the front portion of it, up to, we're actually going to be providing additional green space off the, the upfront. The front of the house won't go as, as far, close to the existing street as, as it did previously. There was a garage currently on the site that's going to be torn down to make room for the 15 additional parking spots to meet the requirement for the ordinance. We will have underground detention. We can do a quick walk through of the floor plan. Okay, I get it, that's fine, thanks. So you have the, the site engineered drawings and also the floor plan... So you have the, the site engineered drawings and also the floor plan elevation in your package I'm giving you to tonight. We'll provide, and the existing portion that's gonna remain will be, actually be the retail space. We'll have an entry off the parking lot on the south side of the building for the check-in. There will be security immediately off that. Circulation space towards the backside for staff and work. There'll be a workspace provided, the safe and office, some new bathrooms, mechanical space. And the second floor will be for future storage. The look of the building will pretty much remain the same as what was previous, vinyl siding, and a step in the back where that currently existing portion of the building will exist. New windows, new, new doors. And then also, from a security plan standpoint, there will be cameras provided throughout for security around the perimeter of the building, and also in each and every room to make sure that there's no blind spots as well. Roddy, do you wanna run through your site plan a little bit, as far as from detention and how we're doing that?
So yeah, hi, I'm Roddy Besleck, I'm with Fenton Land Surveying and Engineering. Basically what we did is kinda held, held what, the parking lot, the shape and the configuration. As Dave said, they're removing part of that building. We're gonna redo the front-facing Bates, nice, add some landscaping, fix the public sidewalk that's along the front of there, create underground stormwater system for detention per the engineer's requirements. Did some landscaping, actually went over the requirements by a little bit. And we're putting up a vinyl fence on the southerly side and kind of the northerly side in the back to prevent the headlights, again, times like this. Generally, it gets darker at night, so we wanted to kinda cover the residential area and put up that vinyl fence to prevent the headlights from shining over on the house that's right behind us, and the houses just to, adjacent to us on the north. Other than that, we're adding a dumpster, again, a few more trees, and that should be about it.
Thank you. Is there anyone here who would like to comment on this case? Is there anyone who would like to comment on case J-21, 0113? Is there anyone here who would like to comment on this case? Hearing none. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing? It has been moved and seconded to close the public hearing. Commissioners, is there a motion to approve ca, case J-21, 0113, to allow a special use permit for marijuana establishment at 222 North Bates, contingent upon approval by the engineering department for all utility connections, stormwater capture and release, and proper parking lot grade, grading inflow, and the applicant successfully securing approval by the city clerk for an adult-use marijuana establishment license? It has been moved and seconded to approve this case. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Somebody gotta come back up here, 'cause I'm talking to somebody. Two things, I like the bushes. Don't make this a false pretense for me, 'cause I like the bushes. The other thing is, how many employees?
There's gonna be approximately 15 to 20 employees in the facility.
Full-time, part-time?
Sorry?
Full-time or part-time, sir?
Mostly full-time, that's the plan. And there'll be obviously in between shifts for, you know, within the allowable hours.
Okay, and your security is?
Security is gonna be, the camera system is gonna be controlled through, we're gonna have, through analytics, 24-hour monitoring on, on site. So they monitor all activity in case there's any situation may take place, they automatically will address. They can, they can communicate with the person on the other end, the facility, inside and outside, if there's a situation. So 24-hour monitoring on that service.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for the bushes and the pretty flowers.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a question for staff. What is a public comment for any residents around the area? Have you got any, any residents, phone calls, letters?
We have not gotten any.
Okay.
Any other questions from the commission? I had, I do have a question about your bushes and trees. Are these native to Michigan?
Yes, they are.
Thank you.
You know, they look really pretty in the fall.
No.
I'm gonna come over and dig some up and put it in my ear.
They don't look like tumbleweeds.
Hit the button, hit the button.
Any other comments or discussion from the commission? Thank you. Hearing none. Staff Zimmerman, will you take a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Zawarko.
Yes.
Commissioner Dallas.
Yes.
Commissioner Hanley.
Yes.
Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Commissioner Nash.
Yes.
Commissioner Assash.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
You didn't heard it all.
Good luck.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the public hearing for case J-21, 0114, to rezone 510 South Warren from R-01, restricted office, to B2, general business. Is the applicant or representative present for case J-21, 0114?
Thank you, Madam Chair and esteemed commissioners.
Please state your name and address. For the record, you have 10 minutes for your presentation.
Thank you. I'm Daniel Saperstein. I'm the executive presbyter for the Presbyterian Church of Lake Huron Presbyterian Church, USA. We are operating as the custodians of the Warren Avenue Presbyterian Church Corporation. As of December 4th, 2018, we assumed that jurisdiction when Warren Avenue Presbyterian Church ceased to continue its normal operations. Warren Avenue Presbyterian Church has a history of 150 years of ministry in East Saginaw, and it is one that has had a long and important role in the, the wellbeing of East Saginaw residents. When the church ceased its normal operations, the Presbyterian assumed jurisdiction with a commitment to preserve its legacy of mission for the wellbeing of Saginaw residents. We actively sought cooperation and partnership with the Saginaw Collaborative, which was a 501(c)(3), which we assisted in the formation, its formation with the goal of turning that facility into a community service center, resource center. We had an oper, a working relationship with them for two years, from June of 2018 to June of 2020. Unfortunately, they were unable to obtain funding necessary to, to convert the building for those purposes. The last official communication we received from them was in April of 2020, where they indicated, at the time we had set a deadline for their response, that they had not obtained the funding. So we actively sought other partners, and we received a request from Holy Communion Gospel Center, a, a religious community on the east side that wanted to look at our building, and we offered to provide them with that building free and with additional monies if they could provide the necessary repair work to keep the building operational. They ultimately were unable to obtain that funding, and we had put out at that time requests for proposals to demolish the building because it has fallen into great disrepair, and it was both a physical and visual blight on the community. Just before we were able to operate on those RFPs, act on those, we received a request from Restoration Community Outreach. This is a community, a organization you'll hear from in a moment, that has pushed us and encouraged us to provide for this rezoning for their, for their use. We are committed to the work that they are doing. We have committed up to $200,000 of our Presbyterian monies to retain the building, which is a historic landmark, and also has a significant presence in that community, so it might be used for a constructive purpose. The alternative unfortunately would be to raise the building. I'm going to introduce Destiny Finley, the Executive Director of Restoration Community Outreach, to speak to the specific proposal in the request.
Thank you for this opportunity to come and speak about what we are proposing to do at Warren Avenue.
Please state your name and address.
My name is Destiny Finley. I'm the Executive Director at Restoration Community Outreach. I've been the Executive Director for two years now. One of the biggest issues that we've run into-
Could you give us your address, please?
Sorry. 1205 Norman Street. One of the big-
Nope, that's fine.
Go ahead.
One of the biggest issues that we run into at Saginaw, I mean at RCO, is that the space, the space allowed to help the men become better versions of themselves. There is not a lot of space for classes, there's not a lot of space for recreational activities, there's not a lot of place for just them to sleep. I don't know if you all are aware, but we have 30 men who currently sleep on the floor. They've been doing this for the last 30 odd years, and in the past, it's just been a benefit because it gives them housing and gives them a roof over their heads. But we've learned that in order for them to be better, we have to provide them with better. And so this building offered us an opportunity to have recreation, it offered us the building to have non-congregative shelter, and it allowed us to be able to provide them with the space that they needed. And so we were offered this building by the Presbyterian Church without the knowledge about the zoning, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Without the knowledge about the zoning, without the knowledge about the restrictions that, that may come into play with us moving into that area. And so we just really learned about some of the, some of the issues that may come with the building more recently, and so we're here to kind of address those concerns and probably help answer some of those questions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Destiny. At this time, I'd like to introduce Roger Scoville, a former member-
You have five minutes left for your presentation.
Thank you. A former member of Warren Avenue Presbyterian Church, treasurer of the Corporation of the Presbyterian of Lake Huron, to speak to some of the challenges of trying to keep that building. So Roger?
Again, please state your name and address.
My name is Roger Scoville. I, my address is 1414 South Grant Street in Bay City. Warren Avenue Building has, has been at that site since 1898. As our, as our congregation shrunk, maintenance became more difficult. We have, we, as Dan mentioned, we have looked for someone who could take, take the building, provide the restoration needed, and keep, keep a mission, some, some form of a mission presence in that area. If, if we're not, if we're not able to do that, if we're not able to find a partner that has the means to take care of the building, then the Presbyterian is left with, you know, the easiest thing to do is to just ignore the building and let it decay and fall in on itself, and we know that no one, no one wants that. The other, the other alternative is to demolish the building and turn that corner into a vacant lot. And, and we really, we don't wanna do that either. And, and we've, we see that the, the RCO project has the best chance for success.
Thank you. That completes our report.
Thank you. Is there anyone here who would like to comment on this case? Please state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes.
Good evening, my name is Tamara Johnson. I'm here on behalf of Saginaw Board of Education, address 550 Mallard Street. And the superintendent did send a letter with some concerns with that, moving into that location, and I am just here to reiterate some of those concerns. We do have employees that work all times of night, elected officials, and then students and families that come in and out of the building. So while we're all for supporting the mission cause, we will be concerned about security and so forth of our employees, elected officials, students, and families that will be coming in and out of the building right across the street, and we also have another operations location across the other way.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to comment on this case? Please come to the mic, state your name and address, you have three minutes.
My name is Stacy Dalton, and I live at 522 South Warren, which is directly adjacent to the church. And just my preference, I would sooner see the building used for something than to go into decay or get demolished. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to comment on this case? Please come forward. Please state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
My name is Paul Fortier. I live just down the block at 608 South Warren, and I just wanna echo Stacy's comments as well. I feel the same way. I'd rather see some activity there than a vacant building or an empty lot. And it sounds like a good use to me. That's all I need.
Thank you.
Sorry, could I ask you for your address again?
608 South Warren.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to comment on this case?
Hi, my name is Dana McKenzie Simmons, 118 Lockwood. I'm a board member at RCO, and I know for the last two years, Destiny has really put forth the work to really help us move the program of RCO forward, and one of the main concerns have been housing, and proper housing, and accommodation for the men there. And again, for us to provide a place for them where they can get their services, have their shelter, and have some type of recreational means, the, the building, the church there will provide that, and also allow a more inclusive part of the community as well, too. We're so quick to say, "Oh, well, those people over there, or those indigents there." Here, here we have an opportunity, a buildings being, we have a place to put our residents in, so that they can get their services. So I don't, when I heard about it today and I rushed over here to, to support Destiny and to make sure that our voices as the board is being heard, it's, it really just baffles me that the city is in need of programming and different things that we, to serve our people, but yet it's so, the community is quick to turn around and say, "Well, we don't want something in a certain area," or "We don't, we don't want things to happen." But I, I just feel in our hearts of hearts, those who are truly about serving the community and serving mankind and dealing with the human situation, we need to address those needs. And those needs are needed, and that building is needed for RCO. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to comment on this case?
Christopher Brown, address 355 South 28th Street, Saginaw, Michigan, 48601. Myself also is a board member, RCO, and like they said, the community need, over there is small for the men. We need some better structure for better programming, job plans, somewhere for case management, and also mental health, drug treatment, and the church can provide that area of structure for that, not only with the size, but with the means also, giving back to the community. So I understand the concerns of the Board of Education and everything. Also, we also, I've worked for the Rescue Mission also in the past, and also that is in this area also. So I understand the concern and the people that come through this area, but at the same time, RCO already have a limit of security. I, I believe- oh, I already have a limit of security. I, I believe that'd be something they can look into if we, if we was to take over the building, to provide better protection also for the concern of this neighborhood. But also, I think the guys, because I can relate to them, of the homelessness, the drug abuse, alcoholism, and things like that, I believe that we could supply and get them the things that they need to be more productive citizens for the community. That'd be it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to comment on this case? Is there anyone else who would like to make comment on this case?
Is there a third call?
Do you want to comment? Go ahead.
Okay, go talk.
Please state your name and address. You have three minutes.
Hi, Dawn Goodroll-Hilary, two-ten South Washington, Saginaw, Michigan, four-eight-six-zero-seven. Also owner of Dawn of a New Day Coffee House and several other properties in the city of Saginaw. I am very, I'm a proponent of the homeless community here in Saginaw and have supported it through work and volunteerism. I am a supporter of Destiny and the work that she does. She has done a fabulous job at RCO, and they are one of the organizations that our family gives to. I have worked with the Presbyterian through the Saginaw Collaborative, and there are some things that we try to bring forth through the collaborative with the Presbyterian, and the $200,000 was something that we needed to put a roof on that church and to get things started with a couple other organizations. And we could come to, that, that, that was a, something that wasn't coming forward to the collaborative for us to get that project going. We did want to serve the community through the church, and that was some support that we thought we had through the Presbyterian and through members of the congregation, and, and I guess, I guess we have unfolded. Anyways, after that, after I heard about this project coming up, again, I support the homeless. I don't think this is a appropriate place for our homeless community. I know that RCO is in need because we are there a lot, and they do need, the fact that they've been there for thirty years, I mean, as, if I were a board member, board members, come on, let's get up some walls. Let's do a little bit more for our men. If you've been doing that for thirty years, we need to do something different. And I understand you want to do more, but let's try to find a different place. And I would be about volunteering to find another space, but when we're talking about ARPO, ARPO funding, and our neighborhoods, and youth and family, that is one of our upcoming, that's a eastside neighborhood that has the most development in it in the last ten years. It has had the most folks that have put money into their homes, and it's right on the fringe of our downtown area, and that doesn't mean that we don't have homeless. We serve them at our place of business, and again, I think that there is another place for RCO, and again, I'm, I want to speak and do as I speak. So I have spoke with-
Your three minutes are up.
Yes, here it is. I see it. So thank you very much. Destiny knows I support her, and-
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this case? Please state your name.
My name is Sam Pruitt. My address is sixteen-thirteen Cedar Street.
Thank you.
I'm an employee of RCO. I was also on a committee with the old church behind the downtown dental clinic that's been a big problem we're trying to get rid of. So I know the plight with trying to unload a church is a very difficult task. A lot of people don't like to use them, so I'm also a tree-hugging and environmentalist. I don't like to see things torn down, especially things with historic value. I'm one of the guys that people see when they come in the door. But being left out is the stories of healing and the stories of resilience of the men that actually come through the doors. I don't know if you know what we do, but we're a homeless shelter that serves a population no one else wants to talk to. I remember it was a time when nobody wanted marijuana in their back doors, and look at the problems we're having today. So I'd like to see the progress. We're at our capacity. We're, we're, we're at our gills, and we have no more space. We're looking for an opportunity to expand so we can increase the population that we serve, so we can increase the stories of healing, so our city can heal together. We can't heal in sections. We can't heal in pieces, and we all need to heal. The population that we serve is the greatest population of the homeless, and we are out of space. So we're pleased, the board. We appreciate if you allow us to maintain this space and continue to work for RCO. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to comment on this case? Is there anyone else who would like to comment on this case?
Madam Chair, I have a letter from the superintendent of Saginaw Public Schools, Dr. Ramat Roberts. He states, "The school district of the city of Saginaw is in receipt of the hearing notice relative to the rezoning request for Warren Avenue Presbyterian Church scheduled for Tuesday, December twenty-first, 2021. Please understand that the school district of the city of Saginaw opposes rezoning the church to allow for a men's shelter. The location of this church is directly across the street from our administration building, which is the central operation facility for the school district. Therefore, there are students, parents, visitors, state-elected officials, local, locally-elected officials, business owners, and other stakeholders in our community that visit the administration on a daily basis. In my opinion, allowing a men's shelter to be located in that close proximity to the building that serves as the central operations facility for the school district is not conducive to providing an attractive environment for potential families and students. Furthermore, the shelter has the potential to pose a safety threat for our employees, visitors, and important students that frequent the administration building. Therefore, this letter serves as an official notice to the City Planning Commission that the school district opposes the rezoning of Warren Avenue Presbyterian Church to allow for a men's shelter. Respectfully, Ramat M. Roberts."
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to comment on this case? Is there anyone else who would like to comment on this case? Is there anyone else who would like to comment on this case? Thank you. I will now ask the commission to offer a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved. Support.
It has been moved and seconded to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstained? Thank you. Is there a motion to approve case J twenty-one dash zero one one four to rezone five-ten South Warren from R O dash one restricted office to B two general business?
Move to, move to support. He's supported.
I still need a second to move forward on this motion. Commission? I need a second to move forward on this motion. If we want to vote it down, we may do so. If we want to vote it up, we may do so. But we need a motion to move forward in the meeting.
Lack of a second will kill the motion.
Is there a second on this motion? Hearing none? The motion is, falls to the floor. We cannot vote on this. What is our next option for the repellent, appellant for this particular motion? Excuse me, for this particular proposal?
Hey, I believe at this point you would move on to your next agenda item.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a procedural question, Madam Chair.
May I ask it?
Because the motion did not receive the second, is there no opportunity then for appeal?
I will defer to my staff.
And then staff would have to look into that and get back with you.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the 2022 meeting calendar.
Please note that I did send out a revised version with December twenty-seventh instead of, because of a conflict with a different meeting. Generally, like this bunch of month, we move it forward because of Christmas, but there was a new meeting that is added on the third week of December at this time, so we had to move that back to the twenty-seventh.
The twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh.
I just plugged my phone.
Hopefully you don't have plans to go out of town for Christmas.
Do we need to vote on this?
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve the 2022 meeting calendar?
So moved more.
Support Nash.
All in favor of approving the 2022 meeting calendar, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? 2022 meeting calendar is approved with the change of the last date to Tuesday, December twentieth, through, instead, it will be Tuesday, December twenty-seventh, 2022. The next item on our agenda is old business, master plan status update.
Um, we do need a motion, I believe, after for Bob, yeah. At the last meeting, you guys had discussed in November that City Council was, was moving the deadline for the adoption of the master plan to the beginning of June, but we did not have a motion. Could we have a motion to approve that?
So moved more.
Support Nash.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the master plan status update to the City Council by Ju-June first?
Yes.
2022. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? So moved. The next item on the agenda is adjournment, but before we get to that, thank you.
I had one more update. If you all saw that we sent out the park and rec, the Parks and Recreation Plan is right now up for its thirty-day of public review. I have not received any comments. Have you gotten any comments? It's available down in the clerk's office, and it's available online. We had to do a posting on MLive and the city's Facebook page about it, and then that will be going to City Council on the January tenth meeting agenda for adoption, because on February first, it needs to be in DNR. So we're on track for all of that.
Okay. No.
I know you won't let me talk.
I'd like to wish everyone happy holiday. And much snow.
You just beat me.
Thank you. That's, I'm true. Now, is there a motion for adjournment?
Not yet.
Not yet?
This, oh, this is a serious question for-
I got you.
-for the city attorney. Is there any way we can put a moratorium on all these dispensaries and grow places? Because half of them have never came to fruition yet. So you have all these applications out, and nothing's really happening with some.
Well, I, I don't know if you could, well, first of all, that wouldn't be a decision that would come from Planning Commission.
I just, I just-
Because your oversight is on the special use permits, which is just one step in the business license application process, which is a completely separate ordinance over which planning has no review. But I, I don't know if a moratorium per se-
I don't know.
-would be allowable. It would be a decision of City Council to effectively repeal, even if temporarily. It's opt-in ordinances. I don't think that's gonna, I, I can't speak for council, but council certainly, it, it was the policy of City Council to opt in. It was the policy of City Council not to limit the number of facilities. I can say that there are two things in the ordinances that are supposed to help move things along. One is that in the zoning ordinance, and it went into play about six months after adoption. It was an amendment, but individuals who receive their SUP have ninety days to get their provisional license from the city clerk. Otherwise, their SUP is considered null and void. The other is that after receiving their provisional license from the city clerk, they have a year to get their state license. There is an opportunity to request a six-month extension on that, and I'm sure that after the new year, there are a few developers who are going to be ready to apply to the city clerk because-
I'm gonna check your glass.
There are issues and delays that are associated with construction because of the pandemic. That's, that's just what we're seeing with a lot of places.
No, I'm just saying, because if we have somebody out there, there's not a lot of action on a lot of them, you know, just the buildings that are, you know what I mean?
There's not, but there's, there, there's some safeguards built into the ordinance-
Okay.
-to keep those on task, or they, they stand the risk of losing either their provisional license or their SUP, depending on the case.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments from the board?
Happy holidays.
Is there a motion for adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes.
Stained?
Enjoy the holidays. Meeting, adjourn.